Okay. First, we pledge, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Open this August eighteenth commissioners meeting, showing all three commissioners present. The auditor, county attorney is missing on vacation on our way back, will not be here tonight. So, that's probably just sitting in that corner, you gotta go first.
That's what I wanted, honestly. I don't have a whole lot, I just wanna throw out there that EMA is in the position right now with our schedules and things that we're doing, that we are looking and asking your blessings. We have the old Blazer that's set out beside the building and the old Durango that's set out beside the building forever, that we can get those sold off and put the money towards another vehicle that we can utilize more so. We have the Tour, we have the Chevy, but we are really in the market where we need to put another one in motion. So, if I can just get your blessings, I've got a couple people already interested in the Blazer. They've stopped in, shown interest, the Durango might be a little bit issue to get rid of it. But moving forward then, I'll, yeah, look around and do some really good titles. Titles both, I believe either they're in my office or on record here. And I'll have to work too.
So, a couple of those vehicles we had out there didn't have titles. They were from Plaski County on the military surplus, so.
Those are gone?
Yeah.
The five tons gone? And we had it on Plaski County, so.
I should have you had a title for that, so if you do.
I'm pretty sure I do. In going through my files, I've already seen those at one point in time, back in the beginning of my startup, so.
Think you can just sell them to a new pageant though.
Yeah.
Okay, what do I need?
You have to go through an auction or something, so you got an actual bid, shows that you, you know, didn't show, give it to somebody cheaper than it was worth, you know what I'm trying to say?
Okay, so that's what I need to know, you know, how, how to get your blessings on how I need to go about going through it. So, get them on an auction somewhere?
North of Olson Auction.
Olson, where am I?
Okay.
Over there.
Alright, no problem.
And then also then you'll probably have to reappropriate or ask the council to give the money back.
I don't know about that, come on.
Good luck.
Now, what about the old tower lane out there? If you got a East Ford or you need to get rid of that?
No, it needs to go. I've tasked a couple of the volunteers who are willing to come and get that side over there cleaned up completely. It'll be complete, everything that's over there on that side will be gone. Actually, Kerry has sprayed that, we're trying to get down to the gravel and then probably put another layer of gravel there. When they put the lines on the parking lot, we can only pull out nine parking spots, the way it was set up. So, we're wanting to pull a little bit more parking, take the trailers, put them back on the back, and then utilize that also. So, the lines are done, all that's done. IT's coming in one day this week and upgrading my computer. My computer, he came out today and he couldn't even remote in today because my computer, we've done so much that it's full. So, he redid that. Trying to think if I have anything else. Wednesday I will be in Elkhart, Friday I'll be in St. Joe, and Steven will be around. And we are, it's already posted, I've already talked with Christina Hawes, and we are looking for another part-time, part-time deputy. So, Sherry has stepped down, and she will be doing her exit interview with Christina Hawes. I came in last Monday and talked with Christina to find the directions and go that direction with her. So, other than that, that's all that's new. Steven's willing to right now step up and do what needs to be done, so.
Good deal.
That's it, that's all I have, pretty sure. So, anytime I'm.
I've seen a thing on your reimbursement, you get your reimbursement state, from the state.
For the MPG grant?
Yes, right.
Did that come through Kathy?
That's just your, that's your pay, that's your pay grant.
Yeah, 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 I did. I forwarded all that to you guys as far as it was approved and is coming through. So, my MPG grant's coming through for my wages.
Yep, I thought it was the end, okay.
So, can I have the money from the trucks? No, I get those.
You gotta go to council on that one.
You guys good with her selling those two trucks?
Yes, I am, you good? Alright.
Okay.
Don't click it through an auction.
Okay, I'll get him through an auction, I'll put Steven on that, cause he's my, keep track of that soon. Thanks guys.
John and Travis can kinda give you, cause they both said stuff over there.
Alright, alright. So, we'll get working on it, I'll put Steven on that one. And we've already kinda looked at a vehicle and we'll have to go through council and everything there too.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
It works. John, do you wanna? Okay.
Well, good evening. So, what I'm passing out is, it's a quote, but there's, I don't have to ask anyone for money, it's already there. I've been waiting for this to come out for quite some time. Priority Dispatch has basically a training skill lab, artificial intelligence. It's gonna be a great training investment for my department. And what that does is it's basically just like taking a live 911 phone call and inputting information into Pro QA on all three disciplines. So, when you ask a question, they'll respond with that and answer. And then at the end, it tells you what you've done good, where you need to improve. Also, it goes towards the training that they have to have in each discipline per year, so it's continuing ed. A lot of times during training, we spend some time trying to role play, I guess. This is gonna do that for us, and then it will provide me with reports to see. It doesn't matter if it's even a new person, it's gonna be even for me or my assistant that's been here for 24 years, just to stay fresh, see where we're falling short. If I find somebody during quality assurance that isn't doing so great on specific protocols or something, I can actually physically go in and assign them protocols related to that protocol itself. Like I said, I've been waiting for it for a long time, they finally just released it. The money's there, so basically I just need your guys' blessing and sign the quote, if you would.
That, this is a year, $6,000 a year?
Yep.
So, it'll be $6,000 every year to do that.
Besides the first year, they gave us a gift of $1,500, so the first year is 45. This is all web-based, so it doesn't matter, I could use it on all six terminals, I could use it in my terminal, I could use it at home. So, it's just, like I said, it's a really good training tool with these protocols to make sure that we're building towards even more complacency than what we're doing quality assurance for. It doesn't have anything to do with quality assurance, it kind of scores the call taker after each call. That way they can see how they did and where they need to improve. I think this will help with like remedial action, so if I find someone's fallen short and I've provided them, you know, with an action of how we are gonna improve, this is gonna help do that, cause I can assign them certain tasks to be able to sharpen their skills per whatever discipline, which leads me into police, I mean, it's been rough. The girls are doing the best that they can and a guy that I have now, it's a hard transition. 911 seems to flow really easy, cause you're asking the first questions of our case entry, where a landline is, the flow isn't quite there, so it's hard to, cause when it's a landline, someone's gonna tell you everything that's going on, and we haven't even asked the first question yet as far as address and location. So, we're just trying to find our flow. Like, I've been doing quality assurance all weekend just to get caught up, and they, they actually do quality assurance on me to make sure that I'm scoring these correctly, and that's been a growing pain too, I haven't queued in a long time. But they said we're basically right on target. They don't expect us to be amazing professionals right now, we're just, we're learning and it reflects that. But with each phone call, they're getting better and better, or they're at least trying, which is all that I could ask for them right now.
So, you're needing us to approve this contract and?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't see an automatic renewal on here, do you know it don't automatically renew?
Yes, after each looks like category, it breaks down the terms right there for the renewals.
Yeah, 531?
Well, just the end of the year changes.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's a three-year deal.
Yep.
520, 53126, 53127, 53128.
And to lock in those prices, I'll pay for all three.
So, this is, this is a three-year contract?
That's correct.
Okay, I got you.
And that locks in the price, so we don't have to worry about inflation or anything, you know, with the, as the years go and everything gets more expensive. I'm sure after that three years, you know, we'll evaluate to make sure that it is an asset to our department. I have no doubt that it won't be, but of course, when that third year comes up to term, then it would be just time to evaluate, just like we would anything else, to make sure that it's cost-effective and everything along those lines.
I've entertained a motion to approve Brittany's request.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded to accept the quote from Priority Dispatch 911, all in favor?
Thank you very much.
So, that gives their permission to sign the contract, correct?
Yeah.
On the back page up at the top, that's where it's asking.
Dave to sign it, or are you gonna sign it?
I, probably Dave.
Okay, alright.
We need to make sure that your auditor's office gets a copy of that.
Absolutely, yep. Is that okay, just to submit it with the claim, or you wanna separate?
No, it needs to be separate. I need to make sure Santal gets up.
No problem. Okay, I completed all the reviews for the employees. Everyone was very receptive of constructive criticism, have a really good team, so. It's just nice to have good feedback and them to understand where we need improvement. And besides doing quality assurance all weekend and getting caught up, that's all I got for you.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do I grab that now or later?
Well, Kathy's gotta get a copy of it and then.
Okay.
She'll get a copy of it.
She can send a copy to Santal.
Okay.
Okay, give it to her, she can send it to Santal.
Or we can sign another one, see what.
They don't matter either, right?
Go ahead, sign another one, just give it to her.
Alright, thank you very much.
Then we each got a copy.
Let's see, Jen, yeah, first. See what the treasurer's office is gonna say.
Did you guys receive the email I sent you about the Auto Agent contract?
Yes.
Basically, I just need your blessing to sign it. What I'm doing is I'm switching from Forte to Auto Agent slash Mecipe now. Better rates for the taxpayer as far as the credit cards and debit cards. Really, better payment options. They can now set up payment plans online, they can pay by their phone now, whereas Forte, you have to use a computer, can't pay by phone. They can do Apple Pay, Google Pay, just all around better option for them. So, there's no cost to us, just basically, need your guys' okay to sign it. The only, I should say, the only cost will be, I will have to replace the two terminals, credit card terminals, cards, and they're $199.
Yeah.
What was the name of the person again, company?
It's Auto Agent slash Mecipe. It's integrated with our, our property tax system and our mortgage payments and everything. Should cut down on surplus, you know, people come in, say, and make payment and then turn around and the mortgage company pays, and then we have to reimburse somebody. This will cut down on this too.
I'll make the motion to give Jen, Jennifer, the permission to sign the contract for Auto Pay?
Auto Agent.
Auto Agent. Auto Eight.
Do I care?
Okay.
Alright, motion made and seconded for give Jennifer the permission to sign a new contract with Auto Agent. Any questions? All in favor? Three oh.
Okay, great, thanks guys.
Yep.
Same thing, coffee please.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Geyer.
Mr. Geyer?
I couldn't recognize John over here, so you know, gotta elevate his status.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Evening, John.
Evening, John.
I've got a few things for you. I'll start with the guys, patchables. We got done chip sealing, I think last week or so. So, we've moved on to trying to catch up with everything else that we've finally collected. In the meantime, great gravel roads, oh, and of course, that's continuing fine. Made a few more millings with the paper, leveling up some of these bad spots across the county. But they're keeping busy. I think we got what, a week, back to the five ten, five eights, four tens.
How many miles chip seal we did down here?
Forty.
Hmm, that's pretty good.
That's about right. Give or take a mile. Community crossings projects, Tor C and B, last time I told you, they've got all three of the roads wedged, 250 South, 550 South, 950 South. I think they're coming back this week, the way I understood it. Put the surface on them to finish those projects up.
We'll lose our speed bump.
Star City Blackout.
We hit that pretty good last weekend. There's a few other places I've pointed out to them that.
Yeah.
Addressed. Bridge 161, they've got the bridge, it's been out, they got the Highlands in on the north side, they started on the south side, I believe today, so we'll get those done this week. Move on with the structure then, so.
How long are we looking on that yet, do you know?
They're scheduled for October 1st.
October 1st?
The way, the way crops are going, they'll probably be harvesting before that this year, but.
But you'll be close.
The goal was to get done before harvest, was in full swing.
They're pretty well on the schedule they had laid out.
Yes, they are, they're getting along very well. They had that NipSCO gas line they had to work around, and that went better than was expected, I believe, so. Passed that plane, that was the biggest hurdle they had to work around. I did send you a copy of LP fuel contract with series. We've never contracted our LP before, but since we went through those radiant tube heaters in the shop, we use a little bit more. I don't know exactly how many gallons we use, but they suggested locking in a price. Pretty decent.
Save your son back, you remember?
I sent it with the whole agenda.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Oh, $1.89. From October to March, so, not, you know, not to exceed 5,000 gallons, but if you guys are comfortable with that, I think it's a reasonable price.
Yeah.
Locks it in, so we know what we're spending on our budget.
Okay.
You wanna sign it, or you want Dave to sign it?
Oh, you guys can sign it.
I'll make a motion to approve LP contract not to exceed 5,000 gallons for, what was it? $1.89?
$1.89.
Dollar, $1.89.
$1.9, yeah.
For a contract for Keystone.
Seconded, motion made and seconded, discussion?
Do you have a question, was that $1.89 or $1.89?
Dollar.
$1.89.
Okay.
$1.90.
I don't need to say $1.90.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody all in favor? Which chair is Brittany?
Yes. Then I also sent you, I don't have a copy of it, for fuel contract for regular gas and diesel in the county. I think I sent you guys the information, but I didn't put it in my book.
Yeah.
So, I talked to Brant, who's my contact with Keystone on fuel. He's recommending possibly locking in the first part of next year now. He could only go till, I think, August if we wanted to go that far. And he said there's a little bit of uncertainty in the market, fuel reserves are low on diesel, and then with everything going on overseas. But right now, they could lock us in at 250 a gallon for on-road, which currently we're at 251. Off-road, they could lock us in at 250, which we're at 251 right now. And then on gasoline, 87 octane, they could lock us in at 226, which currently we're at 230. I'll ask.
Just on a few cents on their current market.
Yeah. Wait till December.
No, what's happening is.
You never know what fuel's gonna do, yeah.
Know what we can do, I mean, we could do the first half of the year and hold off, we could do a quarter, we could do nothing, wait till December, it's up to you guys.
We've hit it pretty good the last couple of years.
We've, yeah, we've had good grades.
It was about this time of year, wasn't it?
No, it was in December, it's usually December.
When did you say you was paying off the gas cards, Travis?
I don't.
You don't remember?
It was just a little bit under reading.
Three and a quarter, didn't you?
Yeah. I have 319, if I remember off the top of my head.
This is 230.
Yeah, yeah.
Or 226.
I, I would say lock it in.
Yeah.
Yeah, 319.
As well lock it in, that way you know what you're gonna pay for it, it's not a gamble, I mean. It's whatever you wanna do, what it goes, thank you.
Sounds, it looks good to me.
Yeah, I mean, like you said, it's getting a little dicey.
Do you know where you're at right now?
On what?
On your, what your, what the old contract was?
Yeah, it's, on, on-road, it's 251, so it'd be, we're paying a penny.
Okay, that, okay, cool, okay, there's current contract on.
Okay, I guess I.
We got it here.
Yeah.
So, it's better than current contracts?
Slightly.
Yeah.
Not great, but it's as good as.
Still pretty.
Still a pretty good deal.
Pretty good, just a gallons.
Do you want permission to sign that contract?
Yeah, well, I don't know if you need to make a motion to approve locking in the prices.
Through the contract and then John to sign it.
I'll make a motion to approve the bids that John just gave us for fuel and gasoline and also permission for him to sign the contract.
Motion made and seconded to, for John to accept the current bids on on-road and off-road, diesel as well as gasoline, and we're also, with this motion, we give John permission to sign the contract. Okay, is it all there? Three oh, curious.
I'll get with him tomorrow, and they can make up a contract, get it signed, and I'll send you a copy.
Alright.
Going on with contracts, USI, they, give me a, so the, for community, unsold assignment authorization proceed for community crossings for 2026 year. I discussed that with you last, last, last meeting. For them to, basically, it's the same thing, I believe, as last year as far as price, scope of work.
Yes, that's correct. We've done two separate contracts, one for project development and one for construction inspection in previous years. We combined them after talking with John, just to keep it simple for invoicing purposes. So, one contract, but same price and scope of work.
Which, it comes to a total not to exceed 60,000.
Any thoughts, guys?
Nope. You okay with it, John?
I am. They've done, they've done us right the last few years.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the USI contract not to exceed $60,000.
So, motion made and seconded to accept the contract from USI concerning the community crossings for this next year, all in favor? Motion carries three of them.
Just wondering. Next thing I wanted to talk to you about, NDOT is planning on, does some culvert replacement on State Road 17 on the Costello Ditch. That'd be between our 950 South and State Road 114, about halfway in there. They'll have the road closed for about a month and a half, starting October 13th, to do that culvert and then harvest. But anyway, so we need to set up an unofficial detour for those, for those projects. I'm recommending that we route, what we, when traffic headed north would be going to 114, you're either gonna have traffic go east or west, cause that's a T. I'm recommending that we route traffic on 9th, heading north to 950 South, and then back up 600 West, up to 114. And then opposite side of 17, 950 South over to 900 West and up to State Road 17 on the west side of your area. Those are our best options. We can't use 800 West, cause the bridge is out currently.
That'd be good to get that culvert replaced, cause that's a pretty good dip.
If I can have your blessing, I think, I think I can sign this, I just need your blessing to sign the local road agreement. Maybe you guys have to sign.
Make a motion to give John permission to sign that local road agreement from the state, right?
Yes.
NDOT, NDOT on the detour.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded, we give John permission to sign the proposed detours for, during construction, our culvert work on State Road 17, all in favor? Three oh.
I do believe we have it set up to where if we have a unofficial detour automatically listed for 35 mile an hour speed limit. Continue with that.
Travis, you got any thoughts on that?
Yeah, whatever you guys.
Sound good.
Whatever John zones, was it 35 or 45, I mean, it's.
I kinda think 45 would be more appropriate on these, they're long stretches, they're smooth roads, they're fairly wide, so.
Whatever you and Travis come up with, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so if that's all right, well, you'll probably need to make a motion to, so what, admin are.
You wanted 45?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Two minutes to 45 miles.
Two minutes up to 45.
The detours.
Yep.
Seconded.
Okay, motion made and seconded to extend the speed limit on detours while construction on State Road 17 to 45 mile an hour, all in favor? Three oh.
Make that happen when the time comes.
Okay.
Speaking of speed limits, Mr. Schroofs here tonight discuss Wobash, South Wobash Road. Speed in there for at least 55 to county road. I'll let him, if you wanna do it.
Yeah, no, I didn't know it'd be up already, I'm glad I made some copies of this. Dirty and formal, I did not have to do much strong army to get, to get signatures. And, I wanted those to put the map on there, just to be clear, if you do not know where South Wobash Road is, but. But, my name's Brock Schroef, I live on South Wobash Road, and I'm here to represent everybody that signed that petition. Like I said, kinda just came about from the sheriff's department trailer dropping a, dropping the speed limit trailer out at our house after we saw it at 450 north, going out towards Lighters Ford, 45 minutes, 45 mile an hour speed limit there. So, we thought, sure, let's get the trailer out to our house, you know? See people going down our road plenty fast all the time. They drop it and it's 55 on the, on the posted speed limit. So, we started asking and like talked to him and realized the state has raised all the county road speed limits to 55. So, that brought this on, basically, and I saw, an ordinance was passed recently, somewhat in the last few years, for Lighters, or Olson Road going out to Lighters Ford for 40. We think, you know, this is not a unique problem, people speed on county roads. I mean, we've all done it when we're running behind, but routinely, we see traffic going so fast down our road, over 55, over 60, and it's a lot of people that don't, they're not from the area. I put on there, a lot, it's a main route for people to go to the east shore homes on Lake Manito, right off 31, it's just under two mile stretch of road. It's, it does have a pretty good curve on it, it does have some signage. But people from large towns do not, I guess they probably don't realize there's a speed limit, so they'll just go. So they'll just go whatever they think is good, and it's a nice, smooth road. So, and credit to you guys on that. It's, it's been a pretty nice road, but, uh, that factor of people, non-local people driving the road that fast. There's a lot of bicycle traffic. We're right off of the Nickel Plate Trail and makes a really nice bicycle route for people coming out of Rochester, Lake Manito. And then to go back around to fourteen. So a lot of factors there, um, bring on a lot of, uh, conflicting traffic, you can imagine. There's multiple hayfields, a lot of farm equipment, you know, you know, we figure cutting hay multiple times a year. I just had a friend get ran into the back of his tractor mowing roadsides down near Macy last week, sent people to the hospital, I believe. It's just a matter of time before something happens and as I, oh, I just noted some residents, uh, children, I myself, we have a, we walk with our daughter and, uh, there's a lot of residents with, with children going to Mountain Zion Bridge to fish. There's two public hunting access points, uh, that go to the DNR wetlands. So there's no parking allowed, but a lot of people stop, park in the site did some, but mostly getting dropped off. So there is a lot of, you know, it's not a unique problem, people speeding, but the other factors leading up to that just creates sort of a more dangerous road. I think it would benefit, uh, everybody to, I guess, consider doing something and we're asking for a forty mile an hour speed limit there naturally.
How, if I can.
Oh, yeah.
How we do it, we always have Travis and John go out and they'll look at it, drive the road, and they pick a speed limit out for us.
Okay.
I'm sure they'll go on your recommendation somewhat, but, but they'll see. And that, that's where it comes from. Then if they come up and says it needs to be a forty, forty-five, thirty, whatever they recommend, then that's usually what we go with.
Okay.
We'll start the process, so.
And the speed trailer has been out there just over a week, so.
Okay, so Travis will have an idea.
And we'll get analytics from that.
That's what I figured. People are, people are calling me, asking me, asking me if their picture is.
Seen that yet, so as soon as I see that, that'll give John and I an idea.
Okay.
What they are running out there versus what would be a, 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 a speed for them.
Yeah, some folks asked me if their picture is being taken. I think it's just, I think it's just a ticker of how many vehicles.
If you tell them yes, it might slow them down.
That's true, too.
Recording their license plate number?
No, uh, yeah, so between those points, bicycle traffic, non-local traffic, it's a popular way to get around the Manito. The two hunting access points and just the typical concerns. I guess that's the point I wanted to drive home tonight was that. And bring that to your attention, but, uh, yeah, there's just, there's already been some accidents. A neighbor got hit probably ten years or so ago on his gator. Um, I mean, I realize they're sharing the road, but I mean, I just think it's, uh, it's dominoes, I guess, going that way, you know? So, um, I'd appreciate if you reviewed everything and considered that and appreciate all you guys do, so.
They'll give us, uh, their recommendation and we'll, we'll go from there.
Yeah, definitely appreciate it.
Start the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Shroff. S R O.
That's about everything I have for you gentlemen. Any questions, concerns?
Appreciate you, John.
Good.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris?
Sure should get copies.
I didn't get a chance to email this out today, so. He gets paper, how? So what I just provided you there is, uh, InJail. Basically, what InJail is, it's a jail management system, um, that the state is pushing out, rolling out right now. They've got, I think, seven, seven counties on it right now. They've got several of them that are onboarding. The ultimate goal is they're gonna have ninety-two counties that are using this statewide system for the jail management. Basically, there's information that, that has to be reported to the state. Um, I wish Holly was here, cause she could explain some of it or at least understand. So when somebody goes to jail, you know, it triggers a lot of stuff through the prosecutor's office, through the court system, through public defender's offices and everything else. Basically, this is what this system does, is it integrates everything together. It's, it's ran by the state, it's paid for by the state, um, it interfaces with a lot of the federal agencies, DOC, um, Odyssey, uh, MyCase, things that the prosecutor's office, that the court system uses and everything else. So instead of man, instead of manually having to put in court dates, instead of manually having to, um, sign cause numbers, things like that. It's, it's automatically, it's, it's basically gonna be an all-in-one system with the state. The state has been doing it off of grants. Um, again, they pay for it a hundred and ten percent. I listened to them a couple of weeks ago and, and I kinda liked the idea, so I got the, uh, command staff with, uh, the jail involved in it. Said, okay, come up with your, your basket of questions. We did another, uh, Zoom with them today. Um, they're, they're really liking it. They're on board. Um, at the end of the day, this would replace Spillman for the purpose of jail management. Spillman encompasses CAD, RMS, laws, I mean, evidence, I mean, there's probably eleven modules. This is just one module. Also, at the end of the day, then, when this was up and running, we would stop paying maintenance for jail management for Spillman. Um, I haven't reached out to them to find out exactly what that is, but I'm gonna guess somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars a year. Um, is what this would save the county, um, by going with the state. The state handles everything. They handle the interface with all of our, uh, external vendors like Stellar for our commissary, uh, QCC for our healthcare and everything else. They are currently onboarding with Marion County. Um, they've already got Elkhart County on. You'll see the last page on there. I think I cut off the top. But it was Sheriff Siegel from Elkhart County that, that, uh, wrote a letter of recommendation for me. It's just, it's a really good, really good program. And at the end of the day, it, it makes a lot of sense, because it's going to, it's gonna streamline everything, um, data reporting to the state. Data reporting between the courts and the jails, um, for jail time credit. I mean, just little things, little caveats that the, the jail staff has to do all the time. This would, this would streamline a lot of that, so. So we're looking at, tentatively, they're supposed to be getting the MOU put around. Tentatively, our, our Spillman agreement will renew November of twenty-five. Um, obviously, they can't get going that quick, so it'd be November of twenty-six is when we'd be looking at rolling out, um, InJail for the jail management system for the jail. So I'm gonna give them roughly fifteen months to, to get everything put together and get, uh, get the interfaces put together. They are working with counties. It's got Spillman now, so, um, it's not bidirectional yet, um, so it'll take information from Spillman. If Travis Heisman gets arrested today, it'll take that name file from Spillman and it'll import it into jail management and then be able to create that name file off of that. So, um, that'll cut down on some redundancy and things like that. Ultimately, they're wanting to go bidirectional with it, so Spillman will drop the information down. But then Spillman will also be able to grab the information back from, from InJail about the booking and everything else, so. Um, at the end of the day, it looks like a great, great program. If it's anything like the state normally does, um, they usually ask really nice, um, and then they start pressuring you and then they make it so difficult for you to do your job. And it's gonna force you to get onto the system, so, um, they've done that with Insight, they've done that with Odyssey, um, in the past with the court system. So I guess in the next ten years, you're gonna see ninety-two counties on this system, so. So anyway, that's, uh, is there any questions on that? Feel free to reach out to her, reach out to me if you got any questions on it, but it, it does, it looks like a, a win-win situation. Like I said, at the end of the day, then that would, that would get us off of a maintenance contract with Spillman then for, for at least one module, so.
Sure.
Sounds good.
Um, this morning, we had seventy-six inmates, uh, twenty-eight Grant County, four DOC and eleven federal. Received information from Grant County, they're pulling some of their inmates back due to funding. I don't foresee them pulling them all back, um, just because that's gonna make them go from overcrowded to super overcrowded. So, but they have pulled thirty-some back, um, so I really think that's probably where they're gonna stay at. Um, I think the, uh, the sheriff and the council are in a feud right now over, over funding, um, holding these out-of-county inmates at other places. Council hasn't came, came off center as far as building a jail and, you know, they've got to do what they've had to do, but they're, they're super overcrowded. If they have all their inmates, they're super, super overcrowded, so, um, I think they're just trying to find a happy medium right now, so. Um, in July, if, uh, this year we invoice for ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. With the total during, or total during, uh, totaled RAM, um, we got a check from Liberty Mutual for almost fifteen grand. That would be minus the five thousand dollar deductible, but they're gonna reimburse us the deductible, because it was a non-insured motorist that actually struck them, so we're at forty-seven hundred on that. So we're looking at nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars at the end, the dollar sign, um, for that vehicle. So I'm gonna go to the council tomorrow night and see if we can, uh, get that money back to, to buy another vehicle, um, detective vehicle. So, um, I think that's all I've got. Unless you guys have any questions for me.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Most updated version of our list for the next couple of months would be in home. Um, we will be meeting, um, with the warming center team on this Thursday to discuss the next steps. So we are looking at what does it look like to execute the warming center for this coming season, um, knowing that we've lost some of the teammates and, uh, did not receive the grant. So Dawn has graciously offered to put a Zoom link together, cause that is literally the only way we can get together, cause we are busier than a one-armed paper hanger in a windstorm. So, everybody can all leave.
That's a new terminology.
I stole that from somebody. Um, so looking at what we can do, I know that, uh, Brian Johnson from the Community Foundation is having a call as well. I believe on the twenty-eighth to discuss some resources for the homelessness and warming centers, so we'll just keep chatting until we figure out what we can do. And then, um, we will have, um, the Beeman Home will have on the, oh gosh, I just forgot the date. I had it memorized, but I've been working all day. Um, the Beeman Home will have their Bingo, if you like Bingo and want to support the domestic, um, violence that helps here in Fulton County. They will be having Bingo for Beeman. That's on Thursday, October sixteenth. It is a wildly fun time. There are, I mean, probably four hundred people that come out to that event at Grace College. Um, it is thirty dollars per person or two hundred and fifty dollars for a table of eight. So any money that is actually raised there is put, um, towards any domestic violence, um, support, whether that be in Casioesco County, Fulton County, or Marshall County, so.
Time is that?
Um, it would be at five o'clock.
You said it's, uh, thirty dollars a person, how much for table?
Thirty dollars a person or two hundred and fifty dollars for a table of eight. So, I will be there working, um, to represent Fulton County, but it's a fun time. They have food and a lot of extra prizes that you can get. So if anybody would like to participate in that, that helps Fulton County and the resources that we receive, um, supporting this activity and hopefully others at some point. Um, last but not least, our next quarterly meeting is this Wednesday. And the location had to change because the library is doing all the renovations. I just walked in there to pick these up and they are still heavy on renovations. So it's at the Youth Outlet Center, same time and same free lunch, so if you'd like to get a lunch. And, um, the conversation topic for this month is on mental health. Becky Clark and Benson will be there to discuss, um, mental health and, um, what resources are in Fulton County for that. And then they will be, um, releasing the flyer for the very first mental health chat, um, that will be on October twentieth at four thirty at the library pending all of the renovations are done. So we're gonna start that series this fall. The first topic is seasonal depression. So anybody that would be interested in learning about mental health resources or, uh, mental health, um, topics are welcome to come. There's no charge and, uh, Forsy Health is providing food free, because that gets people there. So we are working hard to continue to try to do things to support the community. We will be at the fair, uh, the Nickel Plate Festival, not the fair, um, on Saturday. Doing our, um, mental health calm down jars for kids. So, any questions?
Looking good, Amy.
We're gonna continue to, to keep working.
Jamie? Michael?
Michael? Hey, guys, John. Get the easy step out first. Um, in case you're interested in, um, the regional arts, there's gonna be a regional arts summit on October the seventh from five to seven P M. In Logan's Port at the Vibrance Center downtown. Um, this is the rollout of the, uh, Lily Arts and Crafts Money, uh, Project. The good part from my perspective is that once this gets rolled out, they start rolling out the Blythe Reduction Funds. And, uh, I've taken putts off of that project and I've got three separate, uh, projects rolled into one. A housing project in Akron, um, uh, a house, uh, or I'm sorry, a building down in Fulton and another project building up here that we're, I've rolled into one big project, uh, requesting for funds. The industrial park, we're that close from getting our money, the two and a half million dollars. Uh, what we're waiting on now is sport letters from two developers, uh, officially stating that they will build structures out there once infrastructure's in. Uh, we need some layout renderings of the park that we've already got. If you haven't been out behind, um, the truck stop, um, the water tower is well underway. Dirt's been moved. Uh, there's a lot of piping and things out there, uh, so there's a lot of work going on in that area. Let's see, the housing, um, Fourteenth and College, Hawkins Homestead, um, they've got both foundations laid out. And they've actually got one building, the, um, ground floor of one is about three-quarters of the way completed. And they've already started on the second story, which is about halfway done. That's a nine and a half million dollar investment, just that building there. Uh, the Collins Group, which is the group that's going out behind Kroger's, um, that's scheduled to start later this month. I wouldn't be surprised if it doesn't get delayed until early in September, uh, but that's a ten million dollar, uh, investment. Arbor Woods, they're talking about later in the year at this point, um, could be rolled back to early in twenty, uh, spring in twenty-six. That's another, uh, nine and a half million dollars of investment. So in the next eighteen months, you're gonna save approximately thirty million dollars of investment in housing. That doesn't include what's going on with the industrial park and, uh, what's happening out there. Then there's other things going on, applying for grants and things. Uh, we're working with a coalition on childcare issues, um, some small stuff like that. Looking at some districts to, uh, economic development districts to put in, uh, to a couple of these communities here in Fulton County. That's pretty much where we're at.
Thanks, we'll see you then.
Appreciate it.
Hey, Michael, um, did you hear, sorry, that we just got word when we were updating our brochure that the Little Lambs Daycare that was at the church.
Yeah, what's that?
Little Lambs Daycare at the, um, Church of Christ has closed.
I've heard that.
Yeah, so they just wrote us that email, because we're updating the brochure for Fulton County.
That's good to know.
Yeah, cause I know that was one of the things that I saw, an email going back and forth of concerns. I don't, I told them about little Zebbies, but it's just, yeah. The topic of daycare, that might be something just.
That's good to know, cause we're trying to draw, um, they're putting together a committee of people who are involved in all this stuff.
Yes.
And there's people reaching out, not me, but I'm just sitting there, cause I am the treasurer of the whole thing. So I'll make sure that they know what's going on.
Yes, cause that is.
Just to stop a rumor that may be out there or not, Gulteri's is gonna, bakery is being sold. And we talked this, this afternoon with some two young women who, uh, are trying to buy it. But, uh, so that's still wide open. So if you hear any rumors, they're closing.
About a bakery?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just stopped by this morning and saw that there's only open Wednesday through Friday.
Well, that's part of their problem was the hours they didn't keep and, uh, but they've got two really solid people who, uh, are looking to buy.
Okay. I think we're ready to start running through our stack of forms here.
What's that bakery called?
Uh, GAs get a chance to deliver with the minutes.
Yep.
Gulteri twos for the fourth.
I'll make a motion to approve. Oh, that's right.
That's right, you weren't here.
Just me and you, yeah.
Okay, yep, I'll second the motion. So we got a motion made and seconded to accept minutes for. So we've got a motion made and seconded to accept minutes for the August fourth meeting, all in favor?
We'll double-check that.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Just go to claims. You guys get a chance to look over the claims, any questions, problems?
Nope, I didn't see any problems, I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Motion carries. Person here is tax refund of three hundred and five dollars and sixty-eight cents. We've got the wax fleet current payment of two hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Utilities for seven thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents. Lit distribution for eight hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. Miscellaneous claims dating through August the eighteenth, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-one cents. And payroll through eight-eight, we've got a payroll of three hundred and three thousand dollars, four hundred and twenty-three and twenty-two cents, with the deduction of one hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-one cents. And that takes care of all the claims. Okay. Okay, please look in there. Uh-oh, something, anyhow. Transfer requests. Got one here, it's Coroner's Office, can you transfer thirty thousand dollars from identification security protection fund, or from the identi-
Recorder's Office.
Oh, it was Coroner's, you're right.
You was close.
I was close. I've been mowing yards this afternoon, my eyes are a little blurry. From the Recorder's Office, thirty thousand dollars identification security protection fund to computer software maintenance and also extra help, twenty-five thou, or twenty-five thousand there. Identification Security Protection Fund is to be transferred to the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund to be used to redact, redacting purposes. I was made aware of this at the annual Recorder's Conference, it's from Devon.
She's doing it now, but it actually is for the twenty-sixth budget.
Okay. Now, this one's for, I got jumped at myself. Coroner's transferring from health insurance, Deputy Coroner and Health Insurance, total of six thousand, nine thousand, twelve hundred dollars to OSDI for twelve hundred, and Deputy Coroner for fifteen thousand. The explanation is moving from Deputy Coroner's, removing Deputy Coroner's from contract services to personal services. This one's for network administration, office equipment, thirty dollars to office supply for thirty dollars through IT. Another one from the Coroner, moving from cleaning services, two thousand dollars to transports of two thousand dollars. Estimating projection autopsy transports at the end of the year, there's two hundred and fifty dollars left in transport, this will only allow for one transport payout. We hope that these funds are not used when we have families in the county, two thousand dollars will cover eight transports. Okay. Probation building, building sup, from building supply, eighty dollars to janitorial supply for eighty dollars. This is getting the janitor supply out of the negative. County Council, hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-two cents consulting fee to mileage of a hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. Mileage is being paid out due to newly-elected officials in training, getting it out of the negative.
A lot of them councils are.
I know, asking for money, spending it like a.
Communications, office supplies, from office supply, two hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty cents to other supplies, two hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty cents, funding correction from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five, and laptop bag. Laptop bag through me.
Yeah.
County Commissioners, published legals, two hundred and sixty-two dollars to drainage assessment, two hundred and sixty-two dollars, transfer to date drainage assessment, get out of the negative under budget and additional stormwater rates. And that takes care of the transfers. Okay. Is everybody good with the travel requests?
Yep, I'm good with them, I'll make a motion to approve.
So.
Moved and seconded.
Oh, I just, okay, moved and seconded? I wasn't looking down there.
I didn't hear me there.
I didn't hear anything and I didn't see his hand. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve travel requests, all in favor? Okay, we got those, and then we got one more item here. This is on our.
Would you like me to explain that?
Why don't you explain this? I screwed it up both times I was trying to even talk about it.
This is from WTH CoreLogic, who is a third-party mortgage, what they do is they, banks hire them to come in and collect the parcel information for banks to pay the mortgage taxes, or taxes are paid through mortgages. They have to have permission to use, or we have to give W2H permission to allow CoreLogic to be able to use that data for their, their processes, and this is a, they pay for it, so this is just a request for CoreLogic to be able to have access to the data.
Okay, did you guys understand it as well as I did?
Yeah, I understand it, perfect. I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve CoreLogic's use of our data for a fee, all of those in favor? Motion carries three-oh.
Do you know, do we got a contract with WTH, or how long is that, or do you know how I have to hand or not, how that works?
Yeah, we have one, but I don't, I have to pull it out if I don't know.
Brian was talking about that earlier.
You have to pull it.
Get your pages. And I think that takes care of all of our paperwork. Any new business?
Well, yeah, I was going to say this.
Oh, okay, you're right, I didn't look over here. We've got personnel policy to approve. Has for, to be dated for nine, one-twenty-five, we've had copies of it, any questions, thoughts, comments?
No, looked it over, you got anything, Brian? I'll make a motion to approve that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve new personnel policy book, all of those in favor? Carries three-oh.
Wish.
This will go live September first, and it will be on the employee portal on the website, Josh is working on getting that set up, so the employee portal will go live there. Department heads will need to have their employees read it and sign the paperwork and give it to Oz, so she can document that the employees have read it, email will be going out, obviously. One of the biggest changes in the personnel policy is there will be no more seven-minute rounding. You will be paid as you clock in and you clock out. With that being said, Christina and I were having a conversation the other day about when she was going to shut off the seven-minute rounding, so our discussion was, with the exception of the, we know the twenty-four hour, that's her, they're an exception to this. With the twenty-ninth being the last day of this current pay period, we would, I would like to have Christina shut it off at the end of day on Friday, August twenty-ninth, but it takes a motion from.
In your, you were calling the end of day at four P.M., is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we put the deadline on the seven-minute rounding, where there'll be no more after August twenty-ninth at four P.M.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Motion carries rounding will be shut off four P.M. on Friday, August twenty-ninth.
Kathy, we'll get a copy of that one for employees.
Yes?
Yeah, you want an effective September first?
It's effective September first.
We need to give them an opportunity to read it.
I'm hoping to get, Josh gets it rolled out.
Can you send us a copy of it?
Yeah, I can send you a copy.
I, I don't want to wait on him to get it out to our employees, so.
I'm kicking him in the butt, trust me.
Oh, I know, I just.
I will.
I, I don't want to put it on them to only have a couple of days to read it either.
No, no, I'll get you a copy tomorrow.
Thank you.
Do they have to sign on the portal, or can they just sign a paper and give it to, give you the paper?
Just sign the paper.
So if you get a copy of it?
Yeah.
We'll probably just go that route because it's such a hassle out there.
Yeah. That's fine.
Well, they don't have their own computers, too.
Well, that's true with, with their department.
There's a portion of them that aren't very savvy on it.
Yeah, I'll get you a copy.
As to not start a rumor, I think I said Little Lambs and I meant to say His Kids Preschool, did I say Little Lambs?
You did.
I meant to say His Kids, I realized that after I said, so His Kids, Church of Christ His Kids, not Little Lambs, I don't want to start a rumor, just like. Little Lambs is Christian church, yes, so. I know, I said Little Lambs and I said Church of Christ, and then I was thinking, I meant to say His Kids. His Kids.
What church is that?
Uh, His Kids, Church of Christ, Church of Christ, His Kids, and there is a.
I was pretty sure that one wasn't Church of Christ.
I know, so I said that, and as I was sitting here thinking about what I said, I thought, I think I just said Little Lambs and I meant to say His Kids, so we don't want rumors started.
Okay. All right. Any new business?
I don't.
Nope. Kathy?
Nope.
Any, here is new business, I was, I was about all business, anything else?
Other than, we can start doing job evaluations.
That's true.
Of our employees, so we'll get a time where everybody's got a few hours, I know it's hard, but start them whenever, I'll let it up in your hands, so.
Okay.
Just make sure you get me a date and time because that's an executive session.
Yeah, that'd be advertised. Forty-eight hours in.
Yes.
Okay, we'll discuss it, talk with a couple of department heads.
Okay.
See what will work out.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody have anything for the good of the county to be brought up? If not, motion for German?
Second.